Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions?
So move.
Randy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Katie? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Visitors? None. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is going to be 5.1 and 5.6. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Randy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Brad? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Would just like to recognize the Arrow Booster Club for their donations last month, and also to, we had an anonymous donor who donated, made a donation for some lunch expenses, so thank you for those donations.
Move on to six administrative reports. Administration, 6.1.1. Jackie, review budget year-to-date.
Okay, budget year-to-date, we're at 56 percent. Last year, we were at 57 percent, so it appears that we're in line with what I budgeted. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Any questions with Jackie? Any questions? None? We'll move on to 6.1.2. Cory?
Well, it's been an interesting month. Main thing, we had parent teacher conferences, and despite all the movement and weather, I estimated about 26 percent attendance, based on the work that we had come through. Overall, feedback was positive for those attendings, so all said, I thought it was a pretty good couple of nights for parent teacher conferences. And of course, we're always looking at early, early days, trying to refine our process and maybe really get a fun on that end. Those are kind of the main things we're improving right now, so any questions?
Is that 26 percent of the middle school, high school?
Middle school, high school, yes.
Do we know what the elementary school was at all?
I don't know.
No, I, Toni didn't have numbers this morning at our admin meeting, but she also said that, you know, the teachers called and rescheduled, the parents couldn't make it at their scheduled time, so it worked out well for them, she said.
Comparatively speaking, we were at about 34 percent in the fall.
Is there a number we want to get? I mean, like a goal?
Hundred percent.
I don't know.
Come on, Randy, reach for the stars.
I guess, I don't, I don't know what that number means if we don't have anything to like judge it against, right?
Well, I would say try to either maintain or be higher than what we were the previous time, whether it's fall or spring.
Past years, any idea how we compared to then?
Off the top of my head, no.
I had a lot of, when I came Thursday, and I had quite a few of teachers that my daughter had that weren't here. You know, so I think you have to take that into account too, and it, not necessarily because it was because of sports or, you know, things going on, but that makes a difference too, I think.
Yeah.
You know, if some of them aren't going to be there, then, then some of them did end up being there because of the storm too, but...
Right. The dynamics were challenging.
Yeah.
They were challenging in the fall as well.
True.
But all in all, again, I thought it was a pretty, pretty good couple of nights. We did, we did registration both nights in auditorium, which we hadn't opened up to ninth through 11th graders before, so not a huge turnout there, but we were also able to talk to, let's say, more parents than we'd ever talked to about just the whole registration and scheduling process with their students. That was, that was kind of fun.
How are the e-learning days going for you guys?
I think they're, I think they're going all right. I don't think we're experts, but we're in a lot better place than we were six weeks ago, and I, and just talking to some staff that, you know, we haven't really sat down and visited collectively, you know, about our e-learning days, I would say they're getting better at not just pushing out a lesson, but also how to do attendance, how to do exit tickets, how to do that engagement piece, so I think we're getting better on that end. Yeah, but it's, it's been good to really get into that, because I think it challenges teachers to really focus on what are the essential things that I'm trying to communicate, and am I communicating them well?
Do we have good attendance when we do? I mean, what is our attendance rate percentage when we have e-learning days?
I don't have a attendance rate for you. I know some teachers report, I reported, I know some ninth grade classes reported, 90 percent, which for ninth grade, that's awesome.
Right.
Others are more than 50, 60 percent. So it's, it's really kind of hit or miss, and, and I think it's, even kids will check in for like Mr. Dulos's class, because they, they love that class, and, but then they might not for another, you know, that kind of thing, which is really kind of odd, but I've seen a few cases.
Odd that they like Mr. Dulos's class, or?
Well...
They want the challenge.
Just a pretty good example. No, but it is kind of odd, because there have been a few times where kids don't check into every class.
Right.
So...
And on the elementary side, I mean, we've had stories of kids who are up at 6 o'clock in the morning, ripping, ready to go, who on a school day have a hard time getting out of the house at 8 o'clock. So they're very excited, and some of the teachers have shared on social media what they've been doing as well.
So what do you do with the little kids, like the kindergarten ones?
They have a matrix or a bingo card, where they have a column for reading, math, each of the content areas. They also have a PE and a math, or a PE and a tech and a vocal music area, and so they can pick what they would like to do for that day. Mr. Reinhardt puts out a QR code, and also puts out the link on his Twitter page, so that they can have an updated workout each time we have a snow day, so it's not the same one. But, and like today, Mrs. Cruz had put out, hey, they can keep singing the same songs that are on their bingo card, because we haven't had school enough to even practice them long enough, so keep practicing, you know? So they've had some really good communication, the, the specialist teachers have had good communication with their grade level teams, at least at Brown, I've seen that, so...
Have we had any feedback at that level, as far as what the parents, I mean, are the parents feeling it's okay, they're getting through things?
I don't, I don't know of any feedback. I know Toni would maybe be able to answer that question better than I am able to.
Was there much issues with programming or anything with iPads for the kids? They were able to work through everything, everything was installed by your show of hand?
Yeah, for the most part. Our biggest thing was charging, keeping them charged. So we were able to find some money in Josh's tech budget, and purchased 10 of the chargers, because we had the cubes that go into the wall, we just needed the cords, so that we had 10 extra for each classroom, because the cords, the charging cords are inside of the carts, and they're not easy to take out and put back in. So some kids have the capability to charge at home already, so they just, we asked the teachers to ask, you know, who, who needs a cord, who has a cord at home, and then they, we had them all labeled, and they're responsible for getting them back, and so at least we were able to keep them charged, because some of them, the little older ones don't hold a charge as long as the newer ones, so, yeah.
Any other questions for Cory?
I think when you hear some concerns or frustrations, because I think there's been some with the elementary, because the parents have to kind of help them with their cards, and then they get home, or the daycare didn't take care of them, so then they're trying to do that stuff at night, and it gets to be kind of a long day for parents. Those are the type of things that we really need to get that feedback, so parents need to understand that, you know, we always say let the teacher know, but you can also, I mean, if they let a board member know, we can try to get that word back to Mr. Strasser and Ms. Bartman, because they're the ones, and then we can kind of look at, is there some common themes and things that we need to make some adjustments on?
Right.
Because, because we won't, because a lot of times, all they hear is how exciting this was, or whatever, you know, if you're, if we're only getting 60 percent attendance, that's, we've got that capability to check that, so then we have to start, that helps us to look into what's going on in some of these areas, and what are people doing. We do have staff that can help teachers, you know, prepare these, and they do get access, so we've got the resources to do a good job. Sometimes you've just got to get out there and do it and try it, and so we've been getting that opportunity, so I think overall, it's been more positive than not, but there are, we're not perfect either, there's areas we know we need to work on, and part of that is, is we need to know what people's issues are, so...
I don't know, I heard a couple people talk about that their kids didn't have passwords. That was a concern at elementary kids, they couldn't get into their, I don't know if it saved or what the deal is, but it, they couldn't get in. So I don't know if you've been hearing of that, but I've heard that from a couple different people, but it was littler kids.
Right.
I do think overall, our teachers are much better at preparing students for potential e-learning days, and equipping them with the things that they need in order to continue learning and follow the lesson.
I know in some of their, like password issues and things, a lot of the teachers have that in the kids' binders, so that's something, and if, you know...
I suppose they don't have it, or...
I know there are a lot of passwords.
Well, yeah, I know there's two, I've seen that too.
And sometimes they don't always save if they're on their home network, and, you know, like I know Deb helped a teacher today with a student who was having trouble getting on, because that particular student wasn't in his, signed in in Google through his school email. Because to use your Google Classroom, you have to be on, logged into Google Chrome with your school email, not your personal email, and so sometime, I'm, I am signed in with which email. You know, that's our first question.
Yeah, I heard what Kevin mentioned for frustrations, I had that feedback from a, from a parent with younger kids, that they didn't have the time to, to spend at night, or they had a church event or something, and they just, it was just physically impossible. But then on a positive note, and it happened, happened with my own daughter in sixth grade, doing, I don't, I don't even know what class she was doing, but we go to teacher, parent teacher conferences, and they knew how long she spent on each question, and probably why she got the grades she got on, on the quiz or whatever she took, which I thought was pretty cool, that the capability to watch it that close as she's going through and doing her homework. They, the teacher knew exactly how long she spent on each question.
It's pretty neat.
The technology's there for a lot of, a lot of interaction and a lot of feedback now through this, well, that's where I think people don't always understand that, and with the younger ones, it maybe doesn't quite get to that level, but when you start getting into the middle school and high school, there's an awful lot of good technology resources that we have at our disposal for, I was impressed, you know?
When I just think it's a good lesson for middle and high school, just to have to take that independence, you have to look it up, you have to figure out what you have to do, you have to manage your time, and you have to get it done. I mean, at least that's what I think is good for my kids, I'm like, it's your deal, you know, you have to figure it out, and Bennett I have to do more with, because he's younger, but still, it's, I think that's good for that age kids, middle and high school.
Do we have a more defined plan to further refine this process, the e-learning days? Like a more defined way to gather information from parents and, and teachers, so that we can keep progressing with them?
I mean, we haven't talked, you know, like specific survey, surveying of parents to collect that, we haven't done that yet, probably given words in the midst of it, but that's, that's something we should be looking at.
Yeah, for next year.
Getting a better sense of your, things they noted, but overall, what are we, what should we be looking at? But we do talk about it a lot, what are the things that we need to do that can help, help our teachers deliver quality e-learning? And it's exciting, because you have the technologies there, the things that our district can supply as the resources are there, how do we carry it out to a really high level?
And the students will get there, each fall and spring, we do a technology survey, right byte survey, where through there, they'll have questions that will lead us to, you know, how would they use it, and what did they feel was frustrating, or what was beneficial, so we'll be able to use some of that data as well to help refine our plan.
Sounds good.
So what's the consequence if they don't sign in?
They're counted absent.
Yeah, we, we approach it as a typical day missed of school, so when they haven't checked in, then that wraps up that class period or the day, depending.
And they have two days for every, one day that they've missed to make up that work.
And they can log in at any time during the day, right? Okay.
So if they wanted to do it right now, they could, even though it started at 10 o'clock this morning?
Well, there's a certain time that it posts, so they wake up in the morning, it won't be there, the teachers post it, like this morning at 10 a.m., and so once they post it, then the kids can work on it.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, my, my youngest was, was almost crying one night, because she was worried that her check-in wouldn't be noticed by the teacher, and, well, what if, what if it didn't work? You know, it'll work, you know, if it doesn't, just talk through it, but no, everything's went...
And, and, yeah, there's, there's always some issues like that, and we've had to work with students after the fact and say, okay, make sure you're talking to your teacher, clarify those, those situations, so that you were there, show it, you did the work, and there we go. So we, we adjust, make sure that we get them accordingly.
While reading the MSBA's website, there are certain teachers in every district that do have a larger percentage of students checking in. Every, every one of them, if there's been an article about a district, it's, they have said that, that this particular teacher, about 99 percent will check in. And whether it is they love the class, or they really like the teacher, or what, they haven't figured out yet, but it is up there.
Consequences, I mean, I mean, some of it's that too, I think.
Some teachers are using these, these processes on a daily basis, so it's not just for e-learning days, that might be how they have put their class together. Teachers have had websites forever, well, it seems like forever now, but, you know, for a long time, teachers, and some teachers utilize those and have, you know, expectations, and so it's just part of a normal day for, for some students too, that's another piece, I think, where we're trying to go.
And I think more than risk the class, they just don't want to fall behind, so they see to it they check in, and try to stay on top of it, but it was, it's interesting, every district mentioned that, they've got certain ones that, oh, they can really get attendance, and the next one they'll get none. Any other questions for Cory? Okay, number one, 6.1.23, Toni, she's not here, 6.1.4, Melanie?
I just have, the district is in the midst of access testing, and that's for our English language learners, that mandated by the state, and we're almost two-thirds of the way through our students, and then tomorrow, we're giving the Minnesota Student Survey. And as always, we're prepping for the MCA, how that's going to roll out.
And that's what that survey is for, the MCAs, or?
No, the Minnesota Student Survey is given by the state every three years, and it's what our Pipestone Coalition, the data from that survey is what our coalition uses, our district uses it. It asks students in grades five, eight, nine, and 11, very, very many questions about their lifestyle and choices and...
Living conditions.
Living...
It's kind of getting a pulse for how, where, I always look at it, the health of our children, and health is physical, emotional, nutritional, all of those types of areas, so, and it is age appropriate, they're not asking fifth graders about their sexual practices, I mean, but they do talk to some of the, they do ask some of the older students about those types of things, drug use, what type of environment does they, do they have in the home, do they have people that can support them, do they go to the doctor? So it basically gives a pretty overall, you know, look at what is a child's health, and what's the status in the state. We do get that confidential report, reported back to the school district, but they report it out as a state, and they track these students, and you can tell three, eight, or five, eight, and 11, and then they added the ninth grade, but every three years, so they're kind of tracking a cohort of students in our state over their career from, from fifth grade on, so we get some pretty, pretty good data, and the Coalition actually got their grant because of an, out of an unusual spike in alcohol use or something, or in Pipestone a few years ago, at the last one, and so that's kind of where that, positive community norms and those things that have come about through Pipestone, and as you can tell, I think that's been very positive, have a very positive impact on our community, so, but it's interesting to see, and hopefully some things have changed with that, I would assume they would, so...
Any questions with Melanie? Any questions, then we'll move on to 6.2, school board members. Any school board members have any comments?
Steering committee's been pretty busy, they've had probably three meetings in the last month, so we've been working really hard on informational brochures and kiosks and whatnot for the referendum, and we're going to have two open houses, March 5th and 12th, so it's going to be a pretty busy time here coming up.
I'd like to, to all of, all the board members that can make it to that meeting, we would like to have that be a work session, we call it...
Oh, those community meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like we've done with the task force and our other community meetings, it's not that you're there to be inactive, but listening and hearing what people are asking and saying is, is important. Some of the steering committee members will have a few roles, but I think when we get together, we know who's going to be there. ISG is going to kind of have a table, Charles Anderson will have a table, and Springstead will have a table, and we'll also, we're also talking about having like a health and, health, our safety and security informational table, and then maybe having a board member at each one of them, just to listen to what people are saying, maybe there'll be some questions of a board member, but for the most part, that's kind of what we're looking at. We're getting together Thursday night to kind of finalize that first fifth meeting, and see, get prepared for it as best we can, and then we'll see what comes out of that, and if there are things in the community that are kind of stirring out there, or there are a lot of questions, we will, we will deal with that, so. We have heard about, you know, wanting to have a few drawings of some type of where, is this going to all take place, what's the size, so ISG is actually working on a, kind of a, a drawing of the middle school, high school, and where the elementary would conceivably go to the north side with, you know, some of the main areas, but it will not be an actual architectural drawing, it'll be kind of a, a drawing to show where things are at, so that's been a question, and so we'll try to address that at these community meetings, so people get, get a look at what that is.
What time are those at?
7 p.m.
And they're at both of the, you know, Brown Elementary on, on March 5th, and Hill Elementary on March 12th. Questions I had from the guys is, what are we getting for 26.1.2?
Yeah.
That's the question, what are we getting?
That's what I've heard too.
They called in a block.
Yep.
What's going to be there?
I think, you know, I don't want to, we don't need to get into it too much, but I mean, part of this whole is when it, if it is passed, we do want to have further community input into the facilities, and what would they like to see too, and, you know, we, we will have a budget to work within, because you can't do everything, but that can be some things that we want to take input again from, it isn't just you seven sitting here and saying, this is what you're going to do, I mean, we want to, want to hear what the community feels, they would like to see in it, and if we can make it happen, we'll make it happen. Also, calendar met once?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Calendar committee?
Yep, we did, and we're meeting on the 6th to talk to, hear the teachers.
Very...
Ideas, yeah, yep.
Negotiations met, meet and confer?
Meet and confer, yeah, and then tomorrow, Amy and I are attending the MSBA negotiations tomorrow, so kind of get some training, some info.
Actually, I do committee meeting stuff that we've got going on, so...
Any other school board members? Okay, 6.3, so we're...
We have enrollment, is, I think we're down two, but a couple in and one out or something, or three in, three out and one in, but pretty, pretty stable in February, so that's where that's at.
Who moves this time? Said, who moves during that stuff?
It's amazing, they're, they're coming and going, so this is the way it is. I have a number of informational meetings that have been scheduled with variety of community organizations, I think I included that in my last communication with the org, so it is one thing that we, there are some events that you can attend, if you can let me know, because it would be nice to, a couple of key ones, so we went to the city council, Katie and Randy attended with that, and I think that was good. County commissioners want to attend there, they have a meeting at 9 a.m., would really like to have a board member or two that go along to that one, a couple, they're fellow government agencies, so it's good that we have that. There's some other community organizations that, if you can make it, let me know, because it'd be nice to have someone. Kiwanis at noon, I can handle, I'm a Kiwanis member, so, you know, but if you did want to attend, I could have you as my guest, so just let me know, that's tomorrow at noon. And we've got, I think I've got quite a few, a dozen maybe?
Good, that is good.
Meeting, so...
Set up good Sam today.
Yep, yep. Good Sam has, we actually have to do voting out there, so we're going a week before that. Deb and some election judges have to vote, have voting out there. Their status is a, I suppose, assisted living or a...
Nursing home.
Nursing home, so they're the one in the district where they have to do that, so...
Can you go to surgery too now, or?
We could, I, I haven't been asked, or I haven't been required, but we could go out there.
Oh, to visit or to vote?
Vote.
Oh, visit, yeah, vote, you're not required to, because it's assisted, but just nursing home. To visit, you have to, you know, already?
Yep.
That might be a good one.
Do they all like dinner together, I think?
Yeah, I think supper's the big meal they have together, or most of them, but it's like at 5:00. 4:30, yeah, it's early, yeah, so I think it's 4:35.
Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau breakfast.
Oh, that would be a good one.
I don't know if they'll let you...
Present.
Present.
No. Put up a kiosk or something, and have some brochures available. I attended, I don't know when their annual meeting is, but that might have been, I mean, you can't get everything in March, so... I mean, you can't get everything in March, so that'd be hard to, I don't know, what they got going on, so. I've been to their annual. December, fall, October, wherever. Other than that, got some things down later, so.
Move on to number seven, old business, seven point one, strategic plan.
I did get from MSBA, that was in your packet, they have a very good process, and it's very reasonably priced. And they, I, I attached what that was, and you can see that they do some surveys of stakeholders, they do have a consultant that will facilitate some information gathering with students and central office staff and other community members, and then they, and then they kind of work with a strategic planning committee of the board. They do have, this is done in about four meetings, I'm not gonna say that's in, you know, four weeks or anything, I mean, that could be a three to five month process in there, and then they kind of take you through it, so. And I think the school board association in service to the membership, we are a membership of the MSBA, it's, it's that. You can, we have had other, there are other facilitators, they typically are double to three times the price of MSBA, so I don't know if you want me to keep on booking for some of those other consultants. I've, and I think, can't remember who, Katie, did you hear somebody, somebody on MSBA's strategic, or Amy maybe, on the, their, that their process has a very, some schools have had very positive reviews?
Yeah, I heard that's Randy, yeah.
Personally, I didn't.
So I got everybody but Randy then?
Yeah.
Randy, heard that?
Phase three training, there was a couple of school boards, Marshall and, can't remember the other one, that went through it, and they said it was a really good, good practice.
So I think that, that's reasonable, I guess the question would be is when do we want to get rolling on something like that? Like you said, I...
Were they able to like start right away, or is it something that we have to figure out a timeline?
I think we can let them know, and Dr. Olson is the main facilitator of the strategic planning, to get that going, so.
I think we should probably wait until after the vote, I guess, is my thoughts.
I agree.
Because that's, that's gonna drive what your strategic plans are.
I agree. Right, true. When I think it just gets overwhelming for, if you have too many different, much information and meetings and, you know, I mean, I...
Well, it's bottom line, so.
I don't know if summer's the greatest time to start it either though, 'cause unless you're gonna...
I'd rather go sooner rather than later, I guess. And I think we need to get going with it.
So like May, I mean, are you thinking spring, or April, May?
Well, May's gonna get extremely busy, and it's gonna be tough, good lands in here then.
And well, it's busy for people, too.
Can we ask MSBA for their input on, would it be better to start in May or wait until September, maybe they would have some direction on that?
I just think it'd be good to have something set, you know, come the new school year next year. If we're gonna do it.
Typically, I've looked at, in July is when we like to set our goals for the year, you can get into August too, but the whole point is, is again, as a school district and the school board, as the leaders of the school district, is what, what do you want us to do, what are, what is the direction, and that's part of what your role is, so that's what, that's where the goals come in, so it's, and if you start setting goals in November, December, of what you want to get done this year, you know, that's why we like to try to, and it may not be perfect timing, but we can at least get a, a pretty good start on it if we get going in the spring, and, but I, I can talk with them about the timing. Because they, I, I imagine it'll be some data gathering and some time that needs to be done, but they may say the summer doesn't matter to them when, when they're doing these things, they might be able to get out here and do that, so.
Well, there's some stuff they could probably take care of before they send home.
Yeah. The link work on the survey.
Yeah.
True.
So do we need a motion for this one?
Do we need a motion on that, Deb?
I would say no, we're just...
Well, we would need, if we have, if we're going to approve them, to do our strategic planning, we're gonna need a motion.
My only thought is, is you wanted to know the timing, can we do this in the spring? So I can get a hold of MSBA, find out, get a little bit more on that, what do they feel? Is this something they can start in April or May? Or would they say no? And we can bring that back in March, and still get started.
Yeah, they have the last month to, during the...
Okay.
Okay.
And I think if there's a final, she still did want to know about when to get this started, and maybe the, maybe the, maybe they'll come back and say, you should start this next fall. That way then I'll have that, we can say, okay, let's set a time, and we'll look to kick this off in October first or something, you can set your timeline, and then we'll go from there. Even though it'd be nice to have it at the start of the year, still, this is a four to six year plan that you look to set up, and, so.
Okay.
All right.
We'll move on to number eight, new business, eight point one, approval, approved payment of regular monthly bills, do I have a motion to approve the payment of regular monthly bills?
Almost.
Katie, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Amy, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve payment of regular monthly bills, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point two, approved treasures report for January, do we have a motion to approve treasures report?
So moved.
Brad, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lance? Do I hear any discussion? Any discussion?
Green, yellow, or red?
Do you want to report in January?
Green.
Yeah.
It'll be about one point five million dollars plus next month, because a lot of people will be going out in February, twenty eighth.
The final one.
Second.
The final second, the final one.
Just made our last levy for next year, so.
Levy for next year.
Two payments.
Two payments.
This year and next year.
Any discussion on the treasures report, or questions of Jackie? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve treasures report for January, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point three, discussion of employee appreciation.
I think MSBA, Katie had heard, attended a session, and I thought this was something that maybe we should talk a little bit about, and see if there's more we want to do, so. Katie, you want to just maybe mention a few things and what you're thinking here?
Well, I guess I didn't know what I was thinking, I was going to do some legwork and kind of see what their, you know, what, and I don't know what we all do. You know, I'd like to know what we do already, and decide if it's an, you know, what, if we think it's enough, and I, and I think, I want to make sure that all entities are getting appreciated, not just teachers or para, you know, I mean, are we doing something for janitors, are we doing something for, you know, just each secretary, you know, those type of things, I guess, and I don't know what we do, or...
I would say, I mean, we have our, you know, next on the agenda is paraprofessional recognition, we, we recognize and we kind of do declaration, and I know admin, we've tried to do a few things for them. We do recognize teachers, there's counselors, there's social workers, principals get a month. Really, October is principal's month, but, and then, since I've been here, when anybody in, in employee retires, we recognize them, and, but it's been in May or June, and that last recognition breakfast, so, but in terms of other, more, just things that can be done, we, we don't, and I don't think we go overboard on this at all, so.
There was that lunch last year, is that the same thing as that breakfast?
District recognition lunch and...
They made like a lamb and egg or...
Oh, yeah.
And that's again where we, you know, mostly recognize retirements, and that's not just teacher, that'd be any employee who retires from the district, but we set that up in policy of what they would receive for years of service, based upon how long they've worked. There's different recognitions that way, so. But we don't do anything for five-year employees or ten years, sometimes you get those recognitions, we could look at trying to do something more, and make that day, get more people involved in recognizing their years of service.
What ideas did you have, Katie, or like the, what, the presentation that you heard?
Well, they just talked about how important it is to make sure that your staff's appreciated, and how, you know, appreciating your staff can make your, just your team better, and your, you know, just the, I guess, the, how well you're doing your job, and how much you like your job, and those type of things. So they did, I mean, and they had a lot of different things, you know, they, and a lot of, some of it was lunch stuff, some of it was just sending out things to staff members, some of it was recognizing different things that they're doing, so I guess they didn't really have any specific things, but it was just kind of in general that it's something that you need to make, take notice of, and make sure that you're, you're doing those things and appreciating all, all staff, not just like, yeah, there's a special teacher appreciation week, or there's a, you know, I mean, just so that everyone feels like they're a part of the district, and that they're appreciated by staff and school board and administration. Which, I mean, even at my job, I like to get appreciated, you know, it's nice to have someone, even, it doesn't have to be a monetary thing, or, or, you know, just so that someone's saying thank you or...
Sent to their home.
Yeah, or whatever, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be...
So is there something you would like administration to, to collect ideas, or bring forward?
Sure, I guess I don't, I don't know the process, I can say. Was confused about the process of it, so I don't know what I want.
I would say we need to make a motion that we're interested in, in doing employee appreciation, somebody would need to make a motion, and then through the motion, direct who would want together information as to what we could and couldn't do.
Who's in, who would be in charge of something like that? I mean, who would be?
I think you're gonna have to go to your administration and have that, do that.
Are you talking about what you can spend, spend the money on?
Why not even be money? Just like recognition of employees.
Because I have a stack, you're just part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, I mean, we aren't gonna buy any new cars or anything. You're, sorry, you're out.
Can we do like a brainstorm, or like a work session on it, with administration involved?
You could.
With like a personnel committee or something like that?
Still gonna need to get the information.
From someone, yeah.
Yeah, if you have administration, collect the information.
Probably want to look at like the list of what we do now.
Well, and I, yeah, I would like to know what we do now, you know, I mean...
That would be a good start, I think.
There's probably a lot of things we do do that maybe I'm not even aware of, you know, I mean...
And, and the groups you're looking at.
Right, and which one, if there's certain groups getting missed, or if there's, you know...
Because I mean, you've got, you've got your janitorial staff, your teaching staff, your professional staff, your, your support staff, secretarial, and all of them, so, I mean, you've got different areas where you're gonna need to look at.
Right.
He's a school board member, wasn't he?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
And I, I heard one, thank you.
I got three, and I got even a little flower.
I only got one, it was for my wife.
No, I got one from out in the public.
Yeah, I got two, and I get a little flower too. I know, I was pretty impressed myself.
Which it was nice to hear. From being on the road all the time, not accessible so much, so. I guess if somebody would like to make a motion, then we forward this to administration to collect data and bring it forward, but...
I would like to make a motion that we forward it to administration to get a list of what we already do for employee appreciation, and collect ideas to expand that if needed.
Second.
Okay, we got Katie and Randy. Any questions? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Timeline and next month?
I think so.
I mean, we need, we need to do it, but with everything we've got on our plate, with trying to pass the law.
When I guess I would, I would be think, I thought, you know, maybe next year, something to implement for next, you know, with the new school, next new school year, is what, if we did something, I just thought...
But I think we should have it, so we're gonna start and give them a timeline as to when they bring it forward, because we don't need to implement till next year. But I don't think we want to try and even bring it forward till after we're done with the law.
Right, it's something we can do this summer even, I mean...
Maybe at the end of the school year, have the ideas collected.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of sending, or having the administration come forward with ideas of employee appreciation, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Declare, eight point four, declare March four through eight, twenty nineteen, paraprofessional week, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Yep. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Again, I think paraprofessionals do a lot in the classrooms with our students, I mean, their role is to support students and, and teachers in the classroom, so, you know, custodians, cooks, and secretaries, they have kind of other supportive roles, but these are, are people that are working day to day with our kids, sometimes a rather thankless job, because some of our kids are difficult, and they're, they need a lot of support and help, and so these people work hard every day with our kids, and so sometimes we overlook them, but this week, we hope to recognize them and make that note, get that out, maybe try to do some things in our buildings to, to recognize them. That's next week, I'm sorry, not this week, so.
Need further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of declaring March four through eight, twenty nineteen, paraprofessional week, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point five, retirement letter from Wanda Mickelson, middle school administrative assistant. Kevin, can I have this one?
Um, yeah, our, Corey, Wanda's been employed with the district for twenty years, Corey's worked with her the longest she's been in the middle school, high school office, so maybe Corey, you got a few things to say?
Sure. Many of you know Wanda, just because her role is very public, right there for, for everybody, and it, it's been, it's been a fun nine years working with Wanda. One of the awesome things is, she'll just come and say, well, did you want that done? You're like, yeah, I did, without even any prompting, any thinking. It's, it's that, that base of knowledge, the ability to pull data together when I need it, and figure out how to do it, so that I don't have to. She's just helped out in a tremendous amount of ways, and given some of the turnover we've had in the last few years, and, and trying to help train people to be really good in our office, she's done a tremendous job there, not to mention, she can cook like no other.
Bake.
Bake.
Her Oreo cookies?
She bakes Oreo cookies?
Yeah. Yeah. So just very, you know, bittersweet to, to see her go, but when it's time to retire, it's time to retire, and I would, just very thankful that I got to work with her, and appreciate what she did for our district, and, and always, always keeping kids at the forefront of how she approached her job.
Okay, thank you. I've got a first and second on that right there?
No.
No?
Nothing.
Sorry. So I'm a... Lance? Do I have a second?
I don't want a second.
Oh, Katie, Katie, thank you. Or Amy?
I'm just being sad, I'm not gonna...
Yeah. Well, it's always tough to lose an employee.
I know, she's good.
I think she's been here all the time and my kids have been in the district, so. Anyhow, all those in favor of accepting the retirement letter from Wanda Mickelson, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point six, calendar changes due to weather cancellations.
Um, I think since we had this sent out, there have been two more days added. This is the most current, where we're at, so I just, I had to make a chart to keep track of everything. Our first cancellation was January eighteenth, at which we made up on February eighteenth, which was President's Day. January twenty eighth, January twenty ninth, those were extreme cold days, forty below, fifty below wind chills. We are making up those days on April eighteenth, which is the Thursday before Easter, and April twenty second, which is the Monday following. January thirtieth, we decided that we would not make up that student day and we would have teachers return on June third for a professional development day. It was about that time where you see the late starts, January twenty second, twenty fourth, thirty first, February fourth, we were like, we, we've lost a lot of time, so we decided to end our early dismissals for the PLCs and for professional development and we needed that instructional time and that's where the teacher day came in, so we kinda looked at, we're not, we're, we're still doing well with the hours with our students and that. Our next cancellation was February seventh, which we called an e-learning day. February eighth, which was the very next day, which we decided we would make up and with the cancellation of the March eleventh tech conference, we are now able to have students on March eleventh, so that day will be made up there. And then the last three, February twelfth, February twentieth and February twenty fifth have been e-learning days. So, as you can see with nine days, these e-learning days really help us. We are still on track to conclude school on May thirtieth with the students. Teachers will end up being here till June third. We still have some winter left to go. We are allowed five e-learning days, so we do have one more and we will see where things are at. I will let the, let you know that I have a superintendent's meeting on Wednesday and there's discussion that we are going to ask the commissioner of education to push back MCA testing. MCA testing window opens next Monday, March third, fourth, and is open through May tenth. I think we're gonna ask that testing be opened up until May twenty fourth, giving us an additional two weeks of instruction. And I think across the state, that isn't just southwest Minnesota, it's all over, so I will keep you posted, but that'll be one of the things that we're talking about. I've been asked a lot of questions about the governor saying he's gonna forgive those days in, or in January. It isn't that the governor gets to forgive days. It's in state statute that we have a hundred and sixty-five days of class. There are hour requirements for high school students, it's a thousand twenty hours a year. Our calendar has all those hours plus we have some flexibility, so we are above those hours. A lot of that is technical when we get into attendance and how we get our funding, so that's what we're looking to try to stay within. But if they were to say, we're not gonna hold you harmless, that would be the legislature passing that because it is a state law and then the governor also approving it, so they can do those things. Not exactly sure what that does for us, but you know, it, it is, if we continue to have days, we might be able to use and forgive a few, I, you know, again, I think that's where it's, it's just kind of complex and what we get into here. But we're doing our best and right now we're on track to get all of our, all of our days made up and not continue to go on. You hear about some schools that are talking about adding thirty minutes to their day and, you know, when these, I don't know what, thirty minutes longer, that's their call. I don't know if I would recommend that unless we started getting into issues where we were getting close to those hour requirements. So, I, I feel like we've been doing our best, this has been an unusual winter. This has been a, one of the, haven't seen this for a long time.
No, definitely.
So, that's all I can say, we, we have, we've been getting it pretty good, so, and it may not stop.
That sounds like it.
So, no. So, we did have a calendar that we established, we have made some adjustments to it, so I would ask that the board approve the changes as I have listed for any calendar adjustments due to the weather cancellations.
So how come we can only have five e-learning days?
That's the state law, says you can have five. That'd be another thing, maybe we could petition the commissioner, the state to give us a few more, but, I mean, to be honest, we're, I mean, we're doing it our best, but it's, it's, I mean, I don't think anybody here is gonna say that it's better than having the kids in class. I mean, we wanna have them here, but, but there's also a limit, having them here on June eighth is not as necessarily as productive prior to MCA testing and, you know, that's where things are at, so even though we probably will still have snow on the ground June eighth.
Don't joke.
No.
You're really making me happy.
Yeah, that's all right, Lance.
We need a snowing off.
That's why there's five.
Do we have a flood makeup bead?
Yeah. One thing at a time.
One day at a time.
Anyways.
Okay, eight point six, do I have approval for a motion to approve calendar changes due to weather cancellation?
So moved.
Randy?
Second.
Brad? All those in favor, signify. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the calendar changes due to weather cancellation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point seven, discuss review and comment from Minnesota Department of Education.
We received the review and comment back from the commissioner of education in regards to our bond project and it has been approved or given a positive review and comment. There are some things that we need to do, so I put them up here. In the letter, it says that we will publish a summary of the review in our legal newspaper and that is already slated, Deb, what?
That was last week.
We put it in already, so it has been published in the newspaper. Another thing is, is that the school board needs to hold a public meeting to discuss the review and comment prior to the election. This is on our agenda, so this would be an opportunity for anyone in the public who would like to speak to the board, they could do so. If you notice in here, they can also make comment to the commissioner and the commissioner has not received any comments on this project. I guess I've heard a couple, but you know, I mean, I don't know if that's officially questioning this, this is when you start getting into some of the legality, so. And then the final is that this, after we, or prior to us occupying, we will need to submit some certification that I'm sure the architects and engineers will all have that in order, but that'll be done at the final, at the end of it. And then here is what we are required to publish and this was the description of our project, what it is, what the costs were, a breakdown of those costs. Here it says, the commissioner gives us a positive review and comment and that this is, the information is also in the school district superintendent's office, so. Guess at this time, anybody from the public, would they like to make any comments on our proposed project? Hearing none, I think we've met our obligations, so I guess we're, we're done.
Okay, move on to eight point eight. Memorandum of Understanding with Ludolf Bus Incorporated. Do I hear a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Ludolf Bus? So, Lance, do I hear a second?
Second.
Katie, any discussion?
Just maybe clarification. I met with Ludolphs, we had a billing thing that we had some questions on and we got that and in there we, we came to this specialty vehicle and we've been paying a monthly rate rather than, and this is how we do all of our other rates on specialty vehicles, we've got different sized vans, buses and however we do that and we have these rates. Mr. Ludolph and I worked and, and he presented and I feel like these are in order, so it's just one of these things that we should really get in the contract for this specialty vehicle. It's a, it's a van that's been modified with a wheelchair lift in it for a student that we have, so that's kind of where this all came from.
So going with per trip and per mile rate, how does that compare with the GSD compared to the monthly?
Uh, I think it's better for the school district.
More beneficial.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The reason it came in was kinda had to get it and it wasn't in and Mike and I kinda said, well, what do you wanna, how should we do this? And I was like, what we did and then it's one of those you kinda forget about. And then it was like, we had it, we were talking, so then we said, we better get this adjusted, so we did. So, this is better for the school district this way, so.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with Ludolf Bus Incorporated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point nine, updated e-learning plan.
Um, one of the things that, when we started getting through with our e-learning, we had a plan that we put together last December and I've, and we put that together with all of the components for e-learning day that the state requires, but we kinda, at that time had been talking about having them be scheduled days so that we knew they were coming because we wanted to rehearse and practice, but now we've kinda come to where we're, we're implementing, so we thought it was time to kinda clean up some of the language in here and so we were calling them snow days and really they should be e-learning, it should be a term that we use. So we updated a few things and the one is the terminology of e-learning, we clarified accessibility, which the law says you need to have, what is your process for students without internet access? And we've clarified that if they just can't get it, they would count it as an absence date and they'd be able to make up their work. We had talked about giving hotspots, we checked into the feasibility of having a hundred or so hotspots and the cost for the year, cause you can't just rent them out for the winter, the year cost of that was not feasible and if you didn't have any e-learning days or winter cancellations, you'd be, you'd have all these hotspots and you're paying thousands of dollars. It just doesn't make sense. I think for the most part, our, our students do pretty well. We haven't, we know that over ninety percent have internet access, but for the most part, they've been able to get this done and, and do this, so we feel that's reasonable. And then the other was, is the contract language, we clarified for the teachers and that's where they're working on an MOU, they're voting on this, but if you recall, and for Amy and Brad, you weren't here, but last year, if you recall, board members that we, we, I think the board had talked about, why can't we just do this on the day of an event and teachers just didn't feel confident and administration felt we should just continue to try, but this year with the weather that we've had, we've found the impetus to give this a try and the teachers were the ones that said, let's, let's do this, we, we'll make it work and we'll give it a try, so that's why we've kinda gone forward with this. We, as you can see, we really haven't made any significant changes. There's some language that came out because we talked about scheduled days, so this new version is basically just a little bit of a tweak that way. Basically, in a nutshell, we're not changing the, the intent or the meat of the, of the plan significantly, just making a few little minor adjustments, so. I would recommend that the school district approve this updated plan from what we had and we go forward with that. And again, this is a plan that we can evaluate every year and, but this'll be what we go forward with.
I think what we wanna do though, is we're, we're, actually we've got kind of contradiction in here. Cause they're, we'll, we'll stay up there, okay? There we're saying the school district may utilize, but then when we go up to virtual school days, we are saying the district will utilize. You're saying will utilize, there it all, we would need to say may utilize.
Okay. We only have five days, so.
Right.
And we also have discretion because, I mean, we also talked about back-to-back days, do you wanna do that? Sometimes there's some things where we may say we won't, but may.
I, I think we need to have may in there instead of will because will is saying, this is how we are going to do it. We're saying it's a bunch of follow.
Okay.
May gives you the option of yes, we're going to do it or we may not. Because if you don't get it out there in time, in the morning.
Right.
According to this, it says, well, you have to do it.
We can make that change.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on?
So, so like this morning, that's why we did ten o'clock, because it was two hours late and then it's two hours, so is that saying, because that's saying to me the normal school time. That's a late start school time, so did we technically meet that criteria today?
Today, our normal start time would have been ten o'clock or ten fifteen because we were on a two-hour late start.
Okay.
If we don't, you know, then you would wanna make that call, you know, in the morning or the night before.
Right.
But if you go late, I think we can still, I mean, I mean, technically the call was made about seven.
No, I know it, that's why I was just saying, that's why.
Could've went at nine, but I just went for granted, let's just go at ten o'clock and let teachers get some things, cause they, some come into the school anyway.
Right.
Some need to make different types of arrangements to get themselves, they still maybe have to have childcare when they're training, cause they have to be attentive to what's going on.
Right.
At least make some effort, so. I think the bigger issue is, is yet making sure that you give a couple hours notice prior to the day. Normal school start time for today, the normal school start time would have been ten AM because we called it two hour, or ten fifteen because we called it two hour late start. I think if you make the call at nine, I guess that's where you start going, you know, eleven, now we're into a half a day, is this, are we gonna have enough time? We can still, but I think then you'd wanna say, we're gonna have to go a little bit later here, so. There's some nuancey things that.
Well, I just didn't know.
The law says you have to give two hours notice.
To the normal school time.
I don't even know if it says normal, maybe it says, I can't recall, it says you gotta give them two hours, that must say normal start time.
I just, and that's fine, I was just clarifying that if it's two hours late, that's the normal start time.
That's the way I view it.
Okay.
Don't like doing it that way.
No, and I do think it's harder for young, people with younger students because some people are gone by seven o'clock, I mean, they have to make arrangements before that time, just for the late start, you know, too.
Yep.
Did we need a motion on that one?
I think, yeah, we should approve that, so that'd be our new updated plan with the change of will to may and that virtual day definitions and stuff.
So do I have a motion on eight point nine on the updated e-learning plan?
So moved.
Second.
Randy and Brad? Any more discussion on that? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the updated e-learning plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point ten, proof contracts with Southwest West Central Service Cooperative for 2019, 2020. All those in favor?
Well, maybe I'll just explain it before we go.
Okay.
Would that be okay? We have a co-op, the co-op, we have a contract with them for a variety of services. On the top are the administrative services, this is like our health and safety, our school finance, which is our smart system, MARS, which is the state, how we report students, so that's heavily tied to our revenue. We also have our technology. We have a technology director that we hire through the co-op. Instead of us purchasing or us hiring an employee, we pay for that person through the co-op. In addition to that service, we also get a great deal of access to resources for our technology coordinator and the technology services that the co-op provides and their expertise. That is, totals out to about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year for our administrative services. And then we have education services, which is our special education, and these are different positions that are sometimes hard to fill. They're very specialized, and you can't always attract, so, and you may not need a full-time person, so you may only need like five hours a week, and so how would we ever hire that type of position? We can't. So, the co-op hires, and then that person probably goes around to a variety of different school districts. You can see the total for special education is about five hundred and ninety. Wow, then you got the behavior analysis and autism, so it all goes on there. It's actually six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year in special education services that we contract through the co-op. So, eighty-four percent of this contract is special education, the other sixteen percent is business and administrative services, so. It's something we do every year, we've been doing it for a long time, and I recommend approval. Any questions, I guess, or?
Any questions? Hearing none. I have approval, I still need a motion. Okay. So, Lance, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie? Okay. Any more discussion on the contracts with Southwest West Central Service Corps?
I'll abstain from the spoke.
Okay. All those in favor of approving contracts with Southwest West Central Service Corps for 2019, 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Six oh with one extension.
Five oh.
Five oh. Yeah, MARS. Okay. Eight point eleven, approved achievement and integration plan.
Ms. Wellnitz has been doing a lot of the legwork on this, so we've met with Edgerton, and we've been conversing with the Minnesota Department of Education, and we have a plan, and I'll let Melanie kinda take us through it. How's that?
Perfect. There are four main areas in what we are putting in our plan. Our first area is a math specialist. That person will co-teach with staff in grades three through eight, and will really, actually K through eight, excuse me, and they'll be on a rotation, they'll help implement the math standards, they'll expose students to best practices in instruction of mathematics, and they'll reinforce intervention strategies to alleviate student deficiencies. This position will be the shared position with Edgerton, so we'll have two-thirds time, and they'll have one-third time. That's our first part. Our second part is a math interventionist, and this person will work with students who will really get down into the needs that they have, will intervene based upon need by student, or by need by fast testing students or teacher referral, and will help ensure that those students' areas, especially our free and reduced populations, gaps, close instead of widen or maintain. This will be just our person, they'll work with our students in grades three through eight for intervention. The third part is professional development. We will pull our, well, we will have professional development for our staff that will be supported by our math specialists and math interventionists, as well as ensuring that the teachers are able to understand the standards, they're implementing the standards. The things that the specialist will work with that teacher on in the classroom will be what they'll receive PD on at the same time. And then, the newest addition to our plan is the integration activities. So, we're calling this the cross-district math integration program, and this is what the math specialist and math interventionist will coordinate, plan, and host, along with teachers of those grade levels, with Edgerton students. So, the integration part, because Edgerton is a racially isolated district, it is our job to bring them to us, because we are not racially isolated, and so that our students can integrate and mingle and understand and learn how to not play, but learn and communicate and, and, you know, work with students who are different than they are. So, we'll do that during the summer, during summer school, and there may be some during school activities that we can pull Edgerton students here to work with our students. Other than that, I think that is where we're at. Do you have any questions?
I would just add, this, this is a hundred and six thousand dollars in monies that we have not had prior, so we are looking to utilize this to, and it ties right back to goal one, improve student, increase student achievement. We're really focusing hard on math in grades K through eight. Doesn't, doesn't mean that we're not worried about nine, twelve, but we really wanna get a strong foundation. Our K eight math teachers aren't always math experts, they're elementary or more generalists. Our high school teachers are math, have math degrees, so we would hope that we'll get the standards placed and get teachers feeling good about the math, but then move on that way. Edgerton gets about forty-five thousand dollars, somewhere in there, so, and they've asked us to be the fiscal host, so we'll kinda pay, these will be our employees, and then they'll just reimburse us, so that we have that. But we are looking at this in our reduction plan, so, you know, we're saving some teaching positions with these new revenues, so that's kinda where I wanted to add here too, so it's a pretty, pretty good positive thing that way.
And the only reason this is taking place is because of.
Edgerton.
We don't qualify.
Not yet. The only reason we qualify is because we border a district that qualifies.
And so does Laverne. Laverne declined to participate, so we chose to participate.
Okay. Did I have a motion on that one? Did I have a? Did I have a motion to approve the achievement and integration?
So moved.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? All those in favor of approving the achievement and integration plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Eight twelve, resolution relating to appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for April ninth, 2019, school district special election. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? Any discussion?
Basically, Deb, that's, these people are listed as our election judges and absentee ballot board. We, this is a special election, we're conducting it, so we have to go through and state that these people are qualified election judges.
The situation where two additional votes are required, I think additional votes are probably three more.
Besides these.
Yes, besides these, still. And, I mean, I'm still a math person, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll show you a formality, we got a few of them, so.
Hearing none. All those in favor of a resolution relating to appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for April ninth, 2019, school court, the school district special election, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Randy? And Katie?
Yep.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. To adjourn.